Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular April meeting of the Concord Zoning Board of Adjustment. We will follow our usual procedure this evening, which is to say, in the case of the request for variances, we will ask the appellant to come forward, be sworn in, seated in the chairs to my right, and offer us whatever testimony he or she would like us to hear. We ask that the appellants confine themselves to a 10-minute interval. Following that, we will ask the appellant to step down, and we will solicit testimony from anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard in favor of the appeal. Following that, and we ask those folks to confine themselves to five minutes. Following that, we will also offer a five-minute increment to anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition to the appeal. We will then check in with code enforcement to see if there are any comments from their office. And then finally, if there's been any testimony that seems to justify further factual clarification, the appellant will have that opportunity prior to our closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. In most cases, the board will act on each case before moving on to the next one. We do have a couple of requests for rehearings tonight. We do not normally take testimony for those. In that case, we rely on written testimony that's been submitted to us by those requesting or opposing the request for the rehearing. There, as the agenda goes, 0027-2023, Request for Rehearing for 0 Elm Street, that has been withdrawn. We will not be considering that this evening. We are, however, considering the next one, 0036-2023, Request for Rehearing, Previous Case Number 0016-2022, 106.5 South State Street, UT Urban Transitional District, Kenneth Eblevin, Sr., and Kenneth Eblevin, Jr., owners. The owners wish to establish a retail store and sought a special exception, which was granted in a previous hearing. Did all the board members have a chance to read the memo that was submitted?
Yes.
Yeah? Nick, did you read the memo?
I did.
And Jim, you saw it as well? Did anyone see anything there that suggested that we either made an error in law or fact, or that there was new information available that would justify a rehearing? I'm going to start with you, Nick.
I did not.
Jim?
No, I reviewed it. I think most, all of the issues that were raised in the motion for rehearing were raised at the hearing, so it's nothing new to me.
Okay. Andrew?
I don't believe it's material to our decision, but they raised the issue of parking indicating that the lot does not have sufficient parking, and I don't believe that was part of the application. According to staff, they're non-conforming, so therefore that it's allowed to be used, that the parking is grandfathered in. But if that was not true, they would have to ask for variance for that, but that was not what we were considering that night, so it's not relevant to our decision.
I don't really agree with that.
Okay, nor do I. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move to deny the motion for rehearing.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The request for rehearing is denied for the reasons stated in Mr. Monahan's remarks. We have another request for rehearing, which is Case 0037-2023, Previous Case Number 0017-2022, 911 Lake Street, Open Space Residential in Neighborhood Residential Districts, Anderson Shawn Michael owner. The owner wishes to execute a lot line adjustment to transfer rear acreage to 369 State Street and requested a variance which was granted for a reduction in frontage. Again, the same criteria apply. There were two letters, one on either side of the question, one from, let's see, Trevor Berry of 7 Lake Street, who argued in favor of a rehearing, and then there was a letter from Attorney Ari Pollock of Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartrell, representing the appellants, arguing against a request for rehearing. I started at your end, Ted. Did you see anything in the material that was submitted that would have justified a request for rehearing based on errors in fact, law, or new information?
I did not.
How about you, Andrew?
I'd say also, in addition, there was a letter from Swenson Granite largely concurring with the attorney for Mr. Anderson, and well, I think it was well briefed by all three of the letters. I mean, the issues are very well laid out, and we made our decision. I think they pinpointed why we made it, but I didn't see anything that was different.
Very good. Jim?
I don't have anything to add to Andrew's.
Neither do I.
Nor do I. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move to deny the request for rehearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the hearing, on the motion, excuse me? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The rehearing is denied based on the observations made in Mr. Witter's remarks. And that brings us to the variance requests for tonight. The first one is 21 Dakin Street. This is Case 0035-2023, Downtown Residential Districts, 6 MC LLC owner. This is a resubmission of a variance request from Case 1116, which was considered and approved by the ZBA on April 6, 2016, and has since expired. There is a statute of limitations on these. They have to be either acted on or reapplied for, and that's what's happening here. The owner wishes to convert an existing property formerly used as a mixed-use residence and daycare center into a two-family dwelling and request a variance to Article 2857, Conversion of a Non-Residential Building, Section A, to permit conversion on a lot with 72.9 feet of frontage where 75 feet of frontage is required. Is there anyone here from 6 MC LLC? Please come forward.
I love it, Chair. Thank you.
Swear, tell the truth, and nothing but?
Yes, sir.
May we have your name as you testify, please?
Hector Montanez.
Hector Montanez?
Victor.
Victor, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Please have a seat. Has anything changed in this request since the original appeal?
Other than a financial, that's it.
Okay, all the other?
No, now, family has passed away, kids are out of college, now there's funds to complete the project.
I see. But all the physical circumstances and all of your intended uses are all the same? Very good. Questions from the board? Nick, anything?
No.
Jim?
I'm sorry, I don't think I was here then when it was passed. Where's Dakin Street?
Excuse me?
Where is the location?
Dakin Street?
Yeah.
It's, you know where?
The street, Dakin Street, or if you make it small if you like.
Is that Pleasant Street? You know where the Concord Fire Station number four is?
Uh huh.
Where Marino's is, the sub shop, there's Rite Aid, the Sun Tendere.
Yeah, it's a little side street.
There's a school down that end.
Yep.
And then if you go to the old Blue Cross Blue Shield building?
Uh huh.
Right there.
Okay.
Granite State VNA.
Okay, I got it. Someday we'll stop calling it the old Blue Cross Blue Shield building.
Well, the older ones will never stop.
Yeah, right.
What's it, it used to be a daycare, what's it being used for now?
Right now, it's an octopus.
Oh, it's completely vacant?
Yes, sir.
When's the last time that it's been used?
2017.
I don't think I have any questions on this. Thank you.
Very good. Is there anything else you'd like us to know? Thank you very much. Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
No, sir.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for effectively a renewal of a variance that was granted in 2016. We have, we've heard testimony that there are no changes to the request in terms of the substance of it or the rationale for it. How do you see this one, Ted?
Well, seeing it has been approved before, and the issue seems to be a few feet of frontage, I think this is a very reasonable upgrade to this property, and I would be in favor of it.
Andrew?
Yeah, I have no recollection of that prior hearing, so I'm looking at it, you know, fresh, but I'm assuming that two families permitted in this zone, otherwise they'd be asking for a variance for that, so they're very close to the frontage. I think the purpose of the frontage is not offended by, you know, a two, two and a half foot, so I'm also inclined to approve.
Jim?
Yep, I'm fine with it.
I am, too. We're only dealing with two feet. I think substantial justice would be done. I think the other thing is there's numerous two-family and multifamily dwellings in the neighborhood, so I think it goes with the neighborhood. So I'm inclined to make a motion to approve it.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? I agree with my colleagues on this. If you look at the building, it's quite large. It's much larger than I imagine.
I'll put it back up for you.
Single-family houses are in that neighborhood, so it seems that the circumstances on the lot also justify the request, or the claim for hardship. With that, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance is granted, or in this case, re-granted. You're all set.
Did somebody make the motion?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, Nick made a motion.
Oh, sorry, I missed that. Okay, thank you.
And you made a second?
Ted made second.
Ted made second.
Okay, sorry. Got it.
So, we're semi on the bean here.
Yeah, you're good.
All right. All right. That brings us to our next case this evening, which is Quadruple 02023, 10 Wedgewood Drive, RS Single Family Residential District. Irene Berry is the owner. The owner wishes to operate a seasonal leaf vacuuming business and seeks variances to Article 2824-K, Table of Accessory Uses. You say "for" use of a portion of a dwelling or accessory building in conjunction with an off-premises occupation, where such accessory uses permitted only with a special exception, and outdoor storage not allowed to allow the storage of related leaf vacuuming equipment. Now, would you clarify something for me here, David? It says they're requesting variances, but then it says that a special exception is required.
First sentence says they're variances. We're seeking variances. There's a special exception, though.
And then it says, part of this requires a special exception, and then a part of it requires a variance. Is that, is that a mistake, or am I just being obtuse here?
Let me just verify real quick for you, sir. I believe it is a special exception for the outdoor storage of off-premise equipment for home occupations. Two seconds here.
Of course, I suppose it's possible.
I wonder if what they're getting at is the off-premises, the occupation itself would be allowed by special exception, but there is no use as an occupation. They only want the storage.
Correct.
So, the reference to the special exception is perhaps, I don't want to say unnecessary, but it's sort of just more of a background.
Seems odd, though.
Yeah, it does seem odd, but I wonder if what they're getting at is an off-premises occupation.
Now, we know the storage of the equipment is not allowed without a variance, outdoor storage of equipment. Then it says use of a portion of a dwelling or accessory building in conjunction with off-premises occupation.
Wait, are they currently using it for the business, or that's part of their request?
Or do they propose to use the building for the business?
No, the building's not being used for the business.
All right. It doesn't sound like item one here is germane, then.
Come on, have a seat while we're discussing this.
Yes, please do. We're just having a little chat among ourselves here.
Well, I've had that chat for the past two months. Irene Berry?
Do you swear, tell the truth, and nothing but?
Yes, I do.
Please have a seat, Ms. Berry.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
Tracy has just texted me. It is definitely, as soon as I get my text open again, come on. It's not a home occupation, it's a variance for the equipment.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
So we'll just cross off the special exception part.
So, we'll act on only item two.
But, but, is the, maybe we can ask them, but do they need a variance to, for the use to operate the leaf vacuuming business? Is that part of their request tonight?
No, they're not operating, so the business is an off-premise business, so I think there are variance asked for October, November, December, or one of the months that you asked for.
There's, there's, can?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Permission to speak. There's two parts that we're requesting, is, one is for the parking of a 20-foot enclosed trailer on the paved driveway. That has all the mowers and everything inside of it. The mowers are not stored around the property, they're all inside that enclosed trailer. The second part is to have the leaf vacuum on another trailer that's already approved, that's not an issue, but that leaf vacuum, Ms. Hutton said was an issue. We don't need to have it mounted on that trailer. It doesn't need to be year-round, because thank goodness, we don't have to clean up leaves 12 months out of the year, so we're requesting for that leaf vacuum to be mounted on that trailer in the driveway for the months of September, October, and November. By then, most of the leaves are down, and we've got snow, and they're done cleaning up leaves. The two gentlemen in the front row are the owners of the business.
So no business operation is occurring on the premises, you're just storing?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, I got you.
Could you fill us in on why you believe a variance is appropriate?
Okay. All right. Can I give a little intro?
Of course, yep.
All right, so my name's Irene Berry. It was my first, I'm not a developer, or I am happy homeowner, and it was my first time navigating that, so it's actually myself and my husband, Michael, who's in the audience, that owns the property, but when I finished filling everything out, it was just my name on it. So, our two sons, who are 18 and 20, live at home, and they have their own lawn care business, registered with the state and insured, all on the up and up, and they're just looking to store that equipment that I previously mentioned on the property. Okay, a 20-foot enclosed trailer that is on driveway. We have a unique property in which, with the amount of road frontage that we have, we have two driveways that are each two cars wide and two cars deep, and then the leaf vacuum three months of the year, which is very similar in the liking to the snowplow person who has a plow mounted on their truck. We have a leaf vacuum mounted on a trailer. There's no customers that come to the property. They go to everybody's house. A customer wants a quote, they're going to go to that person's house. The person's not coming to our house. There are no employees, it's the two of them, and that's it. There's no machines out in the yard, everything's inside that trailer, and that's pretty much it. Requesting a variance, because for the 18 and the 20-year-old who one works full-time and the other is in school full-time and works part-time, they don't, it's a small business. For them to have to take on fees to store it somewhere else is a hardship. We do not feel that we are, there's no additional traffic through the neighborhood, there's no, excuse me, there's no safety concerns, they're not creating additional, wow. They're not creating any additional traffic, or, you know, it's, the enclosed trailer's no different than somebody who has an ATV trailer, or a snowmobile trailer in their driveway, so.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, you made, party presentation, you made some reference to the leaf machine is already approved.
It's on a trailer that, when Ms. Hutton met with me on the premises, she said that trailer was not an issue. It's a trailer that my husband and I own.
Is this the fact of what's on the trailer?
So the vacuum is, and it's just So the vacuum is, and it's just mounted on the tongue of the trailer with a chute, so that it can blow the leaves into the trailer after it munches them up, for lack of a better word. So.
Any other questions? Yes, Andrew.
So it was suggested that the, the open trailer by itself would have not required any permission, but the enclosed trailer does?
That's what Ms. Hutton said.
And where, what, where is Wedgewood Drive?
Wedgewood Drive is in the neighborhood behind T-Bones, Olive Garden, and TGI Fridays. Next to Salisbury Green.
So there, there is no way for that, there's no way to kind of store it in back or out of sight, right?
There really isn't, because as you can see, we have a triangle lot, so to try to get it between the house and the property line, there's not enough room. And plus, the backyard really slopes downhill.
Other questions? Yes, Ted.
So do I understand that the, the, the vacuum equipment hooks on the back of the trailer? Is that?
The vacuum equipment is actually on the tongue of the trailer. Now, the easy solution is to take it off every time they get home, but it's extremely heavy. It's actually mounted and taken off with an engine hoist.
So the trailer is used for other purposes other than leaf collection? Is that?
My husband and I go to the dump with it. You know, it's our personal trailer that we let the boys use.
Other questions? Nick? Anyone?
So, I mean, is there any, do you have a garage?
We do have a two-car garage, yes.
There's no way?
Not going to fit inside there.
Even without cars?
Right.
There's no way to do like?
It's too high.
Is there anything you could conceal it with, like a cover or like a carport or something? Like this equipment?
I'm sure we could erect a carport. I mean, but the, the problem is, is the two-car-wide driveway, so trying to secure the other side of the carport into the ground, we have no way to stake that into the ground.
Other questions?
The, you said the vacuum machine is only there three months a year?
That's correct.
But does, is the trailer there year-round, or is it all leaf?
The, the trailer's there year-round. The trailer belongs to my husband and I. You know, we go to the dump with it.
Nick, anything else? Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
Not unless there's some magic words that I can say here.
Unfortunately, I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition to it? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
May we have your name, please?
Gail Fisk. Is that F-I-S-K-E or F-I-S-K?
F-I-S-K-E.
No.
Would you hold just a moment? There's a, there's an ongoing conversation going on in the room somewhere that's not part of our deliberations. If you'd like to have a chat, please step outside and have it there rather than to have it in here. Thank you very much. Please have a seat. What would you like us to know?
Well, I'm a resident of Woodcrest Heights.
And where's that now, relative to?
Woodcrest Heights is right off of Loudoun Road. If you were to go up to the new Dairy Queen, we're almost directly across the street on the left.
Okay.
And where are you in relation to the property, to the applicant?
You can go up and point if, if your lot's on that map.
Sure it is.
I'm going through there.
Oops.
Sorry.
And then it's up and around. This is right here, and it's.
Where you're there can tell us how you access from Loudoun Road?
We have one entrance in, which is coming up from Loudoun Road. There is another entrance at Canterbury, which is kept locked all the time. It's only there as an emergency. And then Hodges has another thing from their back apartments that they have. And that one is open with a gate that they have. It's a gated community, and they access into our community.
So you, so you don't pass by this property to get into Loudoun?
No, but Bill passed by me.
Right, got you.
Okay. Please fill us in on what you'd like us to know.
Well, I'm going to request that you deny the variance. We have 90 homes in our development, and they're all single-family homes. We who live up on the heights seem to have a very disappropriate and disproportionate amount of commercial development in our neighborhood. And I would really like to think that I'm not going to have someone running even a small business out of our community. I'm very concerned about the appearance of larger equipment and things in our neighborhood. And I know from previous experience, when the water project was done, our board, which I was part of at the time, granted permission to the construction people to put one piece of equipment at the end as you came into the development. Within a week, we had more than a dozen. And it was, well, it's very difficult to move it. I have a feeling that some things may escalate. If some small things are allowed, will more things show up on the property? I also am very concerned that if you grant a variance of this nature, when someone else comes to you with a similar small business, have you set a precedent for granting variances in the future? And that's what I'd like to say.
Questions from the board? Ted? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in opposition to this appeal? Any comments from code enforcement?
No, but I just want to clarify. I know you seem to have a lot of discussion regarding, so 28-531 is use of a portion of a dwelling in conjunction with off-premise occupation. So occupation is not a home-based occupation, so we're not allowing a business in a residential area. We are, they are asking for a variance to store equipment associated with an off-premise basis for three months out of the year. The equipment has no advertising on it either. So I just wanted to leave that to try to clarify what they're asking for.
All right, thank you very much.
Next question. How enforceable, if, if the variance is granted to them for three, for this specific type of, of equipment at this specific spot on their property for three months out of the year, how, how enforceable is, is that narrow of a, of a grant?
Well, if we receive a notice or complaint that there was more equipment there, we would certainly evaluate, is it against the variant, against the ordinance first, which the trailer, as the lady stated, is not a violation. They can park the trailer. They're also agreeing to park this trailer in the leaf blower on the pavement that they, that they have now, so they're not expanding their driveway at all. So to answer your question, if we received a complaint that exceeded this, we'd give them a notification, and they'd have to adjust and fix it, or come back to you for an additional variance.
Can I ask a question? Did I misunderstand? There was a closed trailer that was actually what the variance was for? Not the one with the leaf blower?
It was for the leaf blower portion.
Oh, that, okay. So it's just the leaf blower is on the closed trailer. Gotcha, okay.
All right, well, that will close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and I'm going to start with Mr. Monahan this time. How does this look to you, Jim?
You know, I think it is not, I want to hear from everyone else. It's not dissimilar from things that have come to us before. The general, might generally, if it's a business operating on the premises, must be more suspect of how it might impact the neighborhood, rather than in many circumstances where somebody is leaving a, you know, a truck or a plow or something like that. Sometimes there's movers and things like that that leave the truck there overnight. We've been more accepting of it. That said, I'm struggling with a little bit of, around the hardship around the property. If there's anything particularly unique about it, I know Andrew asked some questions about that. Maybe we can hear more of that.
Andrew?
I also would like to, you know, open to the feedback from my colleagues, but I'm, I'm struggling with, I'm struggling with the consistency with the character of a neighborhood like this in a, in a small kind of subdivision style with fairly small lots, and we haven't seen all the houses, but it looks like fairly uniform-type housing to have, you know, some large, commercial-type equipment. I mean, I do think the fact that there's no advertising on them makes a difference to me, so, you know, but nevertheless, I think having commercial equipment in the front yard of a kind of suburban-style housing is inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, what if, what if advertising appears on it? Is it going to, would that be a violation? If advertising appears because they've represented that there is no advertising currently, or would that be considered an expansion?
Well, not an expansion, but now they'd probably be, I'd have to reread the ordinance about storing commercial vehicles on a property. This is a commercial equipment, not advertising, so I'd have to relook at the ordinance a little deeper. I'm not sure that that would be allowed.
So that's how you distinguish between the vehicle and the?
I, I think that's where Tracy was going with this. It's, well, it's not a vehicle. It's not registered on the street.
Right. And if it's, if it's enclosed in a garage or a shed, then it's not an issue?
Yeah, if we can't see it, it's not an issue, correct.
Okay. Nick, what do you think?
Well, it is a unique property, and that has two driveways, so it certainly makes it a little bit different than others. And certainly we have many folks who have snowmobile trailers that are equal in size, that are probably permitted. We'll probably see a lot of RVs and boats parked in people's driveways, so I don't see as. And to require them to remove the, the leaf collector to make it legal, I think really isn't substantial justice if, if they're required to do that every time.
I, it certainly doesn't seem like an unreasonable request in the face of it, but I'm struggling with the problem of hardship. I don't see that, I, I don't see that the lot, that the, that the characteristics of the lot create a hardship in this particular case. They just want to park the piece of, or the piece of equipment on the property, which is unfortunately not permitted, so I'm, I'm afraid I would have to.
Can I ask a code enforcement question?
Yeah, sure.
So, and I think I know the answer to this, but if the, if the trailer was not stored in the driveway, but in the backyard, for example, and was not visible from the street, would it still require a variance?
If the equipment is being stored there, it's not the trailer again, it's the equipment that's attached to the trailer, if I understand how it's, how it's set up. It's the leaf shredder blower equipment. That's the challenge. That's a commercial piece of equipment. So whether it was in the back, it's still visible, it's still going to be a piece of equipment being stored for an off-premise location.
But if it wasn't attached, then it would be allowed?
Well, no, it's, it's still.
If the leaf blower wasn't there, though, it would be allowed?
Yeah, the trailer is, yes.
Right, so I think what they're saying is if they came home every night and removed the leaf blower from the trailer, put it in the side yard, that would be fine.
They only use it for three months out of the year, so maybe it's just three months out of the year they're allowed to leave it on the trailer? Not the rest of the year?
Well, I think I, we heard testimony that they don't leave it on the trailer the rest of the time.
Right.
But then, but there's also separate requests is the enclosed trailer, right? That's also part of their request. On their?
Is it two trailers, or that's what I was?
There's a 20-foot enclosed trailer and then a leaf, if I'm misunderstanding this, on their diagram, they have in red a 20-foot enclosed trailer. That's also part of their request, right? And then the leaf vacuum, which sits on top of a open bed trailer.
If I, could we get the applicant to just respond to the?
The first trailer is legal as it is.
We did not. I didn't think it was necessary, but we certainly can.
It's the equipment that gets attached to it that is.
Right, right. And the second trailer also needs a variance, right?
No. I'm not sure if you're saying.
The enclosed trailer he's asking about?
No, the enclosed trailer is a, does not need a variance.
So neither trailer needs a variance. It's the equipment that attaches to one of the trailers.
Correct, because you're storing.
We've got more angels dancing on the head of this pen. I, I, with the permission of the board, I'd like to reopen the public testimony portion because I did not offer the appellant a chance for factual clarification, and it appears that she would like that opportunity.
Appreciate that.
Would you please come forward?
Request to just clarify, because there's conversations going back and forth. When Ms. Hutton came out and met with us, she said there were two issues. One was the 20-foot enclosed trailer.
That's what I thought she said.
The second issue is the leaf vacuum, not the trailer that the leaf vacuum is mounted on. That, she said that was okay, but having the leaf vacuum out there on the trailer was the issue. It's very cumbersome to take that leaf vacuum on and off. It's over an hour project with both boys and my husband.
So she said that the enclosed trailer was a problem?
She said the enclosed trailer is a, is, I needed a variant, we needed a variance to have the enclosed trailer on the property.
You don't have photographs of these trailers, do you?
She did. I.
I never saw this. Sorry.
I possibly do on my phone.
If she had, I'll have them in, yeah, I hope.
If you have them on your phone.
Okay. It's back in my seat.
We can take a look at them. Ultimately, they're going to need to find their way into the record, but we can all look at your phone for the moment.
Absolutely.
If there are any good kitten pictures on there, we'd look at those too.
Were there three articles that were supposed to be?
Two. So that's what I thought they had said.
Well, in, in Article 1, it's talking about use of a portion of a dwelling or accessory building in conjunction with. So what, what building are we talking about? What portion of a dwelling unit?
Technically, it's the trailer. So like I said, of a shed, it's the 20-foot trailer.
No, I think that's equipment. I think she's calling it equipment.
And I asked her if I needed two variances, and she said I could include it all on one, but one part might get approved and one part might not.
Right, but it's, but it's two, right. It's what she has in red on her diagram here that she needs an approval for. On, on this.
Why is that not stated, though, in the?
Because it's not very clear.
The blue, the blue's okay. The two red marks are what we need variances on.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Based on the diagram.
The big enclosed trailer and then the leaf attached.
I got it. Andrew saves the day. All right.
If, I have another code enforcement question. So if the leaf vacuum is inside the enclosed trailer?
Out of sight, out of mind.
I had asked her if we, I'm sorry.
Because there's equipment in the closed trailer.
I asked if we could just put a box over it. She said no.
Over?
Over the leaf vacuum, when it was parked in the driveway. But we are willing to do that if that's approved.
So it would be enclosed at that point?
Or a tarp.
A tarp, like a tarp?
Yep, a tarp. We could cover the leaf vacuum with a tarp while it's in the driveway. If that's, you know, something that the board would approve.
Well, like you said, some kind of carport cover might look better than a tarp.
We've entered the negotiation. Which we are not, right, which is not.
Does that become the hardship, the, the cost of concealing this equipment?
Cost is not a hardship.
Good, thank you.
Are there any safety issues associated with removing the heavy equipment on and off the trailer?
It's heavy.
At nine o'clock at night after they've been removed.
Yeah. Just let everybody take a look.
That's what I thought.
The leaf vacuum, yep. And that's the 20-year-old in action.
So the trailer, the trailer then is this, right?
Yep.
And the vacuum is just that?
Is just that sitting on the front of it.
That's what you need a variance for?
That's what Ms. Hutton said.
Oh, and the trailer, the big trailer as well.
Do you have a picture of the big trailer too? Or is it just a big 20-foot enclosed?
It's a 20-foot enclosed trailer.
How high is these things? I was like, it's like a big.
Probably no bigger than an RV.
How high is it? Huh?
So not even as big as an RV.
I mean, you can't park an RV in your front driveway.
No.
Okay. Would you do us a favor and email a copy of that to code enforcement?
I will, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
That's it? Okay, great.
It's no bigger than a snow blower.
No, that's much smaller than I was picturing.
Thank you.
You come to my house.
Code at, code at, code at.
They're taking a job right now.
If I could offer, the idea of a tarp, I don't think is.
I will do that tonight.
Cohesive to this discussion.
Yeah, I don't think that constitutes enclosure.
Right.
All right, back to discussion. Public testimony is once again. All right, back to discussion. Public testimony is once again close for now. Where I was, was that, I mean, it is a tiny piece of, relatively small piece of equipment, and it seems to me the rule is kind of a niggling thing in this case. But that's what we're confronted with.
I, having seen the picture, I, I am fine with the leaf vacuum attached to the open bed trailer. I, I don't see grounds for the 20-foot enclosed trailer. I mean, you can't park an R, you're not supposed to be able to park an RV in your front driveway. I know people do it all the time. So I'd, I'd vote for the variance on the vacuum, but not the enclosed trailer. That's where I'm coming down.
All right. Do, is it the pleasure of the board that we divide this into two variances? One for the trailer and one for the leaf?
Yeah.
Leaf vac?
Yes.
All right. Let's discuss then the, the leaf vac at all first, and then we'll move on to the large trailer. How does that one look to you, Nick?
I think the leaf vac, I think substantial justice would be done by not requiring them to remove the leaf vac every single evening.
All right. Jim?
I agree with you on the leaf vac. I'm trying to figure out the, um...
The big trailer?
The big trailer.
Okay.
You know, in some instances, we've been okay with that. Others not. Sometimes it's because of the character of the neighborhood, if you're in a rural setting. But it is, there's a reason that piece of property has two driveways. I think it, you know, was designed to potentially be able to support this type of activity. So if it was the, if the fact that there's a second driveway gives me some more tolerance for the storage of the larger trailer.
Andrew?
I, I'm hearing what Jim's saying, but I'm, I'm not persuaded on the larger trailer.
Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with both.
All right. Would anyone care to make a motion on the subject of the trailer with the leaf blower on it?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The vote is four to one with the chair and the minority. The variance is granted. Now we move on to the large trailer.
On that one, did we want to make note of the fact that it was represented to us that it would only be there three months a year?
Yes.
Okay.
And now the large trailer. Anyone care to make a motion on this one?
I'm moved to approve, given the uniqueness of the property, having the, the second driveway as a location for this type of proper storage.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Should we add that there'd be no advertising?
Um, I guess I'd take that as a friendly amendment.
Although it was...
I just know plumbers and opticians have their vehicles with...
I mean, if it's a commercial vehicle, it could have advertising on it.
These guys don't need advertising. They got their mom here.
How about no electronic?
Yeah, no electronic signage.
They could do magnets and take them off at home.
Take them off at night, right, yeah.
Is it added or are we not adding it?
No, not the signage.
No, we're not.
Okay, so did you make a motion then?
I didn't.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that the variance be granted for the reasons cited by Mr. Monahan concerning, and, and Mr., and Mr. Wallner concerning substantial justice and hardship. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's nay. So it's two, two nays. So it's three to two, and that variance is granted. You're all set. You're welcome. Next case this evening is case, certainly I'm hearing echoes, is case 0001 2023, 103 Loudon Road, medium density residential district, Mark and Christine Bogatz. Are the owners, the owners wish to construct a multifamily development and seek variances to Article 28 24J Table of Principal Uses, Use A4, to allow for multifamily developments where such use is not allowed, and Article 28 45, Development of Attached and Multifamily Dwellings, Section D2, Maximum Lot Coverage and Density, to allow an average density of 21.07 units per acre, or a maximum of 12 units per acre are allowed. Gentlemen, is there a tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
Would you identify yourselves for the record as you testify, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Harvey Pollak. I'm an attorney with the Gallagher Firm in Concord. I'm here tonight for Dakota Partners, the applicant for two variances, both relating to 103 Old Loudon Road. With me to my left is Mark Palote, Dakota's Vice President of Development, and to his left is Chris Neto of the Nobus Group, who provided some project engineering. The site's owned by Mark and Christine Bogatz. Mr. Bogatz is in the audience, and we've provided a letter of authorization for Dakota to pursue approvals relating to the site. Dakota seeks two variances. One is for a multifamily use in the medium density district. The other is for the number of units of multifamily that can be developed per buildable acre. Both variances relate to the property, 103 Old Loudon Road. The property is a 12-plus acre site. Approximately 4.65 acres of the overall site are buildable. The balance of the property has some steep slopes and some wetland areas. Can you all hear me all right? This seems to be kicking in and out. Okay.
Yep, we can hear you.
The site is bisected by a zoning boundary. It's not reflected on this plan. That's the property parcel. The zoning boundary district leaves the buildable area in the medium density zoning district with the balance of the sloped and wet areas in the gateway performance district. This is relevant to the uses that are allowed on one side or the other of the district boundary. And with respect to the neighborhood map, which is included in your packets as part of our application, maybe it'll make its, its way onto the screen, you'll see that it's, it's an oddly shaped parcel. It's surrounded by both residential and non-residential uses, and it backs up directly to the I-393 highway corridor. So that's its, a butter to the, to the rear. Butter to the west is owned and operated by a religious group, operating a church. And the property to the south and east, in the center of that U shape, if you will, is a single-family residence. The, because of the steep slopes and wet areas, the improvements that we're proposing are planned for the building envelope area, which is on the west side of the site, almost exactly where the cursor is now. And that is the area that is zoned medium residential density. The conceptual layout for the project is in your packets as well. I'm hoping we could bring that up onto the screen. It's a plan that Nobus put together dated...
Find it.
March 1st, 2023. That is it. Thank you. The concept, as you see, includes three buildings. Each of them have three stories. There's a grand total across the three buildings of 98 proposed multifamily units. The project would be served by municipal water and sewer with appropriate line extensions for both. The project, age unrestricted multifamily, I'll get into this distinction in a minute, age unrestricted or not elderly housing is allowed in the gateway district or the east side of this parcel. It is not allowed in the medium density district or the west side of this parcel, where it happens the building envelope is located, and therefore our, our variance to pursue that use in the medium density area of the property. Oddly, age restricted elderly housing, 55-plus housing, is allowed in the medium density district. And it is drawing a distinction between the occupant and the age of the occupant, and not the type of structure that's built, or the nature of the impacts typically associated with those structures. Also, the density of unrestricted multifamily housing is limited to 12 units per acre in non-performance districts, whereas, again, strangely, the density increases to 14 units per buildable acre for elderly housing in non-performance districts. If the project was proposed in the performance district, it would be allowed, and it would be allowed at a density that wouldn't require any variances at all. So we wouldn't, wouldn't be before you at all. Based on the 12 units per acre density and the 4.65 buildable acres, the property could host 55 units, and the variance requests to develop 98 in, across the three buildings, a ratio of a little under 21 units per acre. And so what you have is a concept that's proposing 98 where 55 would be allowed. Except for these two variances, one to allow unrestricted multifamily in the medium residential, and to allow a higher density per buildable acre, the project complies with other zoning metrics: lot frontage, side and rear setbacks, parking, lot coverage, perimeter buffers, and building height. There was an early version of the application that sought relief for height. We had a conversation with the zoning administrator to clarify the mean height test applied to peaked roofs, and determined that a height variance would not be necessary. So we are in front of you for two and not three. As to the two variances, the statutory criteria are addressed in our written materials, but I'd like to summarize them for you tonight. Hardship, the property is bisected by a zoning boundary. The proposed use is literally allowed on one side of the line, but not the other. And because of the location of the slopes and the wet areas, it happens that the buildable area is located on the side where it's not allowed, and therefore we're asking for a variance. The slopes and the wet areas of the parcel prohibit development of the proposed use where it's allowed. The parcel has a unique horseshoe shape that self-isolates the buildable area from the sloped and wet areas, almost inviting the development concept to be exactly where we've placed it. And as to the density, after you comply with all the relevant zoning considerations, the buildable area can actually support 98 units rather than the constrained density of 55 units. In other words, there's no fair and substantial relationship, the phrase out of the statute and your application, between the constraints of a multifamily density table and what is actually developable on the site without any other relief. And so, put differently, and maybe more simply, we want to build 55 units, I'm sorry, we want to build 98 units instead of 55, and the impact on the surrounding parcels would be the same. You might say, how could you build so much more and it would be the same? The only potential impact that I can think of that could potentially be different would be traffic. Traffic is an issue that will be closely examined by the planning board if we can propose this application for site plan review. They will undoubtedly require a study. They will undoubtedly commission peer review, and they will undoubtedly condition any approval on mitigation aspects that will make sure traffic is managed. The use is a reasonable one. The two variances relate to a use and a density of that use. If the density was allowed, all the other aspects of development would comply with the ordinance, and it's usable, I'm sorry, it's reasonable because simply changing the ages of the occupants in the same units would turn the use from disallowed to allowed, and allowed at a higher density. We would still be seeking a variance to get from 12 to 14 to 20 units per acre, but we would already have a head start if the age distinction was not drawn. Not contrary to the public interest, much has been made of how the public benefits from the creation of quality, safe, energy-efficient, affordable housing. State law requires municipalities make reasonable and realistic opportunities available within their community. Concord, to its credit, has embraced this call for action for housing creation by improving opportunities wherever it can. Recent examples of this are the council's amendment to the gateway performance district, which is the easterly portion of our site, to allow multifamily and the occup, and the opportunities that are well documented in the Concord next rezoning proposal, which I recognize is not adopted, it's just a draft, it's a collection of ideas that hasn't been embraced, but nonetheless, it's a concept that's baked into the document and I think has some reflective nature on the community's views. I also wanted to hand out an article that was in Monday's registry review, nothing like something timely from the press. This is a, this is a periodical of statewide distribution. It lists real estate transactions, but also has some learned commentary on real estate trends. In this case, the article states that housing listings are at a periodic low, 870 new and existing listings statewide, compared with 5,000 in 2019 and 10,000 in 2015. So it's just more evidence of what we already know is the case, which is we're in the midst of a housing crisis, and it's no surprise that price continues to exclude buyers and renters. The article actually goes on to explain that Merrimack County specifically has had median pricing increase 12% year-to-date. That's a big number for the same property that was 12% cheaper a short time ago. Simply put, buyers are being excluded from the market, and renters are too. The spirit and intent of the ordinance and substantial justice are reflected by the request. The spirit and intent of the ordinance is to protect abutting uses by providing buffers, height restrictions, coverage limits, privacy, in our, in, in the case of multifamily perimeter buffers. And neither the ordinance nor substantial justice support the application or imposition of an artificial barrier to housing relative to age or density within a site if those other factors can be adhered to. We're, again, we're only asking for density per acre, not variances relating to setbacks or coverage or height. Also, the ordinance and substantial justice supports the idea of infill projects as proposed, rather than the development of open space or green space around the periphery of the city, and this site most definitely is in the midst of a heavily developed area. No diminution in value of surrounding properties. There's no evidence to suggest that the immediately surrounding properties would experience any devaluation in a rapidly appreciating marketplace. And I think, to the contrary, the registry review data that we just circulated and the development of the surrounding area only serve to indicate that property values are on the increase. What's coming around is a, is a letter from Bill Norton. You may know him as an appraiser with decades of experience at the Norton Asset Management Group. He's got 40 years of licensed appraisal experience in the Concord and central New Hampshire markets. Bill visited this project site on our behalf. He examined the neighborhood and the proposed development proposal. And with the proposed density, the surrounding mixture of existing, non-residential, residential, his opinion was that the project would not negatively impair valuation. I've taken too much time. I'll stop there. We'll, we'll take any of your questions and, and then yield the podium. Mark, did you want to make comment? I, I didn't mean to exclude you.
No, that's okay.
Being my client and all.
It won't be the first time either. But no, I'll answer the whatever questions you have.
Thank you.
Mr. Pollak, could you walk us through the arithmetic one more time, please, on, on the, on the rationale for the increased density?
Yes. The, there are three buildings, 30 units, 30 units, 38 units, a total proposal of 98 units. The property is 12-plus acres. However, only 4.65 of those 12 acres is buildable. So under the table applied to non-performance uses, or non-performance multifamily projects proposed in non-performance districts, we would be allowed...
Non-conforming districts?
No, non-performance. Not, not a performance, not the gateway district.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Okay.
We would be allowed 12 units per buildable acre. We wish to provide 20 units per buildable acre.
And so what you're saying is that you would like to be excused from the requirement that it, that the acreage that's the, the...
The table.
That, yeah, that's the basis for the ca... That, yeah, that's the basis for the calculation include the non-buildable area.
Correct. We wish to be, it includes the buildable area. We, we have not made any calculation of what the non-buildable area would carry. If we did that, it would be 12 times 12, 144, we'd be well within. But we're, we're not asking for that. What we're asking for is to be excused from the 12 units per acre in the table because it really serves no, no purpose. There's no rational connection between the number of units per acre and a restriction on those units because in all other ways, the project can comply. The building's no bigger, it's no closer, and the parking fits. All the, there's frontage, there's setbacks, everything else fits, so why would it be 12? And, and I'm sorry to cut you off, one more point on that. All you have to do is look one more row down in that table and see that elderly housing, which really takes no more or less space than any other type of housing, is 14 units per acre for seemingly no good reason.
Right. But the denominator in that equation is based on the buildable lot, land, and...
Correct.
Am I hearing you say that the unique characteristic of this lot, one of the unique characteristics of this lot is that it has so much unbuildable land?
That is a unique, there, there's twice as much unbuildable area as buildable.
Right.
So you, you have the benefit of those buffers, but you can't do anything with that land.
Okay.
That is a fair, that is an accurate, accurate statement.
All right. Okay. And then the other thing I understood you to say was that the section of land that's in, that is in the Gateway Performance District that theoretically would allow this type of construction, not necessarily at that level of density, is not buildable land?
Correct. If, if it were buildable, we would build it there, we would not need a variance, and we would be in construction.
Got it. Okay. Questions from other board members, since I've hogged the floor here. Andrew.
What's up?
It, it kind of strikes me that really, an argument, you're not making it, of course, because that's not for us to say. An argument can be made that the zone is really inappropriate and, you know, should be redrawn to, to allow this here. That's probably the best argument you have, I think, but obviously you know we can't do anything about that. So with a, with a development of this scope, I mean, that's a lot of units. Wouldn't your, why not go to city council and try to have them redraw the zone?
That may happen. That is an opportunity. It, as you know, is a longer process that deals with community issues and multiple voices, all within a conversation that already includes a, a proposal to rewrite the entirety of the zoning ordinance. And so rather than get sucked down that drain, we came to you asking for what is within your jurisdiction, which is, which is an exception for a particular project and a particular item of the ordinance.
And one more question. You, you've obviously cited RSA 67458, which I just took a quick look at it. That really speaks to the duty of municipalities to allow for workforce housing in specific. It's, it's a little vague on how it would be applied, but the, the spirit is there. In, in your view, when they say municipalities, is it, is it within the purview of the zoning board to take that into consideration, or is that really more the duty of the, the drafters of the local code to provide for it?
I think it's all municipal actors. And I think, in particular, the zoning board has considerable flexibility to weigh those factors because of the public interest criteria and substantial justice, which, under the case law in New Hampshire, frankly, is ambiguous and vague enough to include just about whatever you'd like. And so I think those are very important considerations.
Yeah, we do enjoy that power.
And, and again, this is why we're shopping here, because we think those criteria are relevant.
Brett, and one, from a developer's standpoint, obviously, I've done four or five projects, affordable-type housing-type projects in the state, and going to the boards yourselves as well as city councils, town councils, it just, it allows you the opportunity to make those decisions and to make it easier. And I guess, as Ari stated, we're looking at this from a time perspective as well. You know, I'm, I'm looking at how to get a project going and getting into the application period, and this made sense, even though that whole area is going through a whole rezone itself, it's made sense to take it this approach instead.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a, do a little more math to help me in that. If you were doing all, is it 98 units as age-restricted, would you need to be here?
We would. So that, according to the table in the ordinance, that would allow 14 units per buildable acre. The buildable acre piece of it is unchanged. And so, you know, we, we, instead of asking for a variance from 12 units per acre to 20 units per acre, we would be asking 14 to 20. But we'd still need to bridge that gap between 14 and 20.
And you showed us, one of the earlier descriptions showed kind of a horseshoe, a butter that kind of stuck in the middle there.
Yes.
Yeah, that's it. So we're...
That's a separate lot.
I'm assuming that develop, you, you've engaged with that developer, you've talked to him about the impacts?
We have.
The property owner. I spoke with husband and wife about that and what we're planning on doing and what their concerns were. Obviously, they had concerns about the casino and the expansion of a casino that's...
You're putting a casino here, too?
That's a joke. No, no, we're not.
No, we're not. But they, they had concerns, and I wanted to address it to them, that our intent was to leave that portion of that east, east, east-west type portion as all vacant land and just not develop that at all. So that was their concern. The concern was traffic, as Ari's mentioned, it'll be addressed during the planning board, as every planning board would ask anyways.
And this is an unfair question. Just, is this project eligible to, to be a part of the Invest NH grant program and have you applied to be a part of it?
Yeah, I can answer that one. We, we, we can't apply yet because it's not permitted, it's not approved.
Okay.
But it would be eligible if it were approved, and, and I guess I should say if there's another round of funding.
And it may well be the case at some point, but again, that's...
Certainly.
You didn't offer that in the record, I did, so...
Yeah, yeah. It's on our screen.
Is that the program the governor was putting in the budget?
Yes.
It's an existing one, and then there, another 50 or 65 million dollars to support projects like this.
That's why it's been in the news lately. Nick?
I'm good.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
No, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to? Please come forward. Swear, tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
Okay.
May we have your name, please?
Alan Herschlag.
Mr. Herschlag, please have a seat and fill us in on what you'd like us to know.
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify this evening. My intent was to testify at the next hearing, but the two are so similar that I felt that, that if you approve this one, then it would make it difficult to deny the other one. And since they're so similar, I believe they have very similar issues as to why you should deny on the request for the variance. So when I look at the master plan 2010, which was adopted in 1993, it states a, a number of reasons as to why the zoning, and as they request in, in, in part four, is not arbitrary. Under policies, to ensure that the density of residential development, the intensity of non-residential development is managed consistent with the physical and financial capabilities of the city to, to provide the required public facilities and services. Under land objectives, to establish, maintain, and administer development regulations which allow a variety of housing types and densities. Again, under policies, the places established herein provide specific guidance to the city, council, planning board, conservation committee, city staff, and other boards and committees, and private individuals on land use matters. To incorporate traffic management considerations into their land use, land and use decision process, to control the establishment and maintenance of land uses that could impede traffic-carrying capabilities of the roadway network and which could lead to unacceptable, unacceptable levels of service. Under neighborhood protection, to prevent the intrusion by inappropriate non-residential uses and resident, into residential neighborhoods, to protect neighborhoods from the incremental impacts of land use change resulting from independent, independent action by the zoning board of adjustment, which occurs outside the deliberative and legislative process associated with the master plan and zoning. And I think, very appropriately, you brought up a concern about why this wouldn't be brought before the city council to adjust the zoning ordinances, which, which have already occurred on a, on a project at the bottom of Pleasant Street, the Bridmore Project, would not have been able to go forward without a change to our zoning, which allows drive-through restaurants, which previously weren't allowed in that district. Development guidelines, to establish development guidelines for both residential and non-residential development, for, for impervious surface area ratios, parking, floor plan ratios, building height, residential densities, and dwelling units per acre. And, and the, the previous master plan, the 2010 master plan, had a number of different categories. Some were carried, carried over, some weren't, but they're, they're similar. So in high density, in, in a high-density residential area, they were very specific in the master plan, that single and multifamily residential development with a maximum density of 14 units per acre should be the principal use in this category. And then there was a residential office and institutional category. And under that category, this mixed-use category includes residential dwelling units at a density of 14 dwelling units per acre. And then under land use zoning comparison tables, there was, under high-density residential, which would be, it's pretty clear what that is, a maximum of 14 dwelling units in a range of 16 to 14 dwelling units per acre. And then density and intensity of development for residential development, residential density is generally expressed as a, as a range up to a specified maximum and is not intended to guarantee the maximum density. So I think it's important to note in section four, under spirit of the ordinance and substantial justice under the heading of attachment to criteria for the zoning variance, and here I don't have their, they, they talk about it being arbitrary. And under our current master plan, which was adopted in June 18th, 2008, that's the master plan 2030, and which appears to be more aspirational than specific than the previous master plan, and while there have been changes in the names and in some instances the use is allowed in the zoning district, it, it, it continues to state that specifically under some circumstances, that 14 residential units is the maximum allowed. And then it further breaks out in the tables, 12 for non-age-restricted and 14 units per dwelling unit, per, per buildable acre for age-restricted units. I think it's also important to restate, well, that, that's not applicable to this particular one, the next one. But again, there is nothing arbitrary about the limitations on, on developable units per acre. It is clear from the two master plans and the incorporation of the recommendations of the master plans into zoning codes that a great deal of thought was given to establishing density criteria. In the applicant's attachment for a variance under section one hardship, again, this is more applicable to the, the, the next one, but a little application enforcement or provisions would restrict development of multifamily dwellings to 12 units. And then, again, they stated, similar to what the next case would, that oddly, this restriction eases to 14 units per buildable acre for elderly housing. And then their argument is that because they meet all other requirements, that the density requirements should, for some reason, be waived. So I fail to understand that just because the applicant states that they can't build more units per acre than is allowed while still meeting all other zoning requirements, how that somehow is a hardship is defined in state statute. And then, again, under the statute, I don't understand, even the applicant doesn't identify a hardship attached to a special condition of the property. The applicant's only contention is the zoning is arbitrary, and they should be allowed to stuff in as many units as they can while meeting the other requirements of our zoning codes. And I'll finish up here. Even when applying the simplex test, it is difficult to assess that a hardship exists. When looking at the unique setting of the property, which takes into account other properties in the proximity, we see that other properties have been able to develop while conforming to density requirements in the master plan's goals and zoning. In section two, simplex states, "No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on the property," which is a reason why you should approve relief. But as I pointed out earlier, that a fair and substantial relationship does exist. When rejecting the applicant's argument that the per-buildable acre restriction is arbitrary, I've shown that there is nothing arbitrary in the per-acre restrictions, as, as it has been a goal of the master plan since at least 1993, placing a specific limit on the number of buildable units per acre, and the number of buildable units per acre have been specifically noted since that time in master plan 2010, master plan 2030, approved in 2008, and in our current zoning codes. Providing relief for the applicant would be contrary to the RSA and guidance and precedence from the courts. The applicant states, public interests, now, this is, the next one, "Public interest supports a prioritization and redevelopment of new, efficient, and safe workforce rental housing. The city master plan and zoning ordinance support development of allowed uses, especially when dimensional constraints can be achieved in full." And again, this is not their quote, but it's a very, it's very similar to what they're arguing. In fact, the applicant is being very selective in what the city's public interest is. They selectively leave out that the very specific density limitations. It is clear that the public's interest is defined in both the master plans and the zoning codes. And these documents clearly state what the city feels is the public's interest in determined density.
Mr. Herschlag, we're, we're, you're, you're well outside of your five minutes here. Can we wrap it up?
I've got one more sentence.
Okay, thanks.
In, in, in closing, I'd like to quote from H. Bernon Waugh, who, who posted a piece on, on the New Hampshire government site on OSI relating to this, and he talks about situational zoning and situational ethics and how, how, not only that you need to look at how it affects this particular piece of property, but what would happen if all the other properties in the area were granted the same relief? Thank you very much. I appreciate your...
Thank you.
...giving me the time to testify tonight.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? Please come forward. Swear, tell the truth and nothing but...
Yes.
May we have your name, please?
Thomas Peetz.
Reverend Peetz, would you like to have a seat and...
Yes, Ben.
Fill us in?
Yep. Am I on?
Yep, you're on.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me here, or being here, you guys. I don't envy your job, but I appreciate what you do for the city. I'm the one that pastors the church there, and we've been there for a little over 30 years. And I know that road, I know that property very well. I wouldn't watch your job concerning that, and I sat down here during some of these hearings for that casino. And I think, I think you, you can't really make a decision on this thing until everybody is really briefed on how that casino is going to affect everything there. Because that is definitely going to have an impact on that area of the city. And you, I think it'd be a good idea to go down there and just look at the layout of how the road is, Old Loudoun Road, and how that all looks, and you impact these places and add all these units to that thing, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna have an effect. I don't, I don't like to be the bad guy, but I think to have an educated, a good educated assessment of what we got going here, that would probably be needed to be done. But anyway, we, we, we enjoy that area, we, we love to invite as many people, you know, we're, we're into the people business. But we also understand that, you know, with that casino coming down there... But we also understand that, you know, with that casino coming down there, with all that activity and stuff that's going to bring, I think people need to take that in consideration. Anyway, I don't have much more to say than that.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you, too.
You look great.
Plattering the board chair will get you everywhere. Is there anyone else that'd like to be heard? Any comments from co-.
No, thank you.
Mr. Pollak, would you like to offer any factual clarification, response to what you've heard?
Yes, quite briefly. With respect to Mr. Herschlag's comments, there was discussion of impacts from the proposed development, and in particular, traffic, just as we had discussed. I have every confidence the planning board can do its job well and measure those impacts, mitigate those impacts, and if they can't be mitigated, deny the proposal because they can't be mitigated. There was a comment that the master plan and the zoning ordinance was intended to state a maximum, that that was done with purpose. I would, I would argue that the same purpose that makes that a maximum would also make it not a minimum. The whole measure here is what fits, and if the other elements of zoning can be complied with and mitigating traffic can be accomplished at the planning board, then I respectfully must declare that table to be arbitrary, especially if it fluctuates depending upon the type of resident in the unit. There was reference to the simplex test. I think it does provide a solid basis upon which a developer can look to the economics of a project and claim hardship relating to the feasibility and affordability of a project, given constraints of the zoning ordinance. And in this case, I think we've identified a prime suspect, an arbitrary maximum, minimum, call it whatever ceiling or floor you want, it's a, it's a number that doesn't have a lot of basis in reality, and that's the basis of our request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. I'm going to suggest to the board that we take this as two pieces, one being the use and the other being the density. Is that consistent with the way you look at things? We've heard testimony that the existing property is unique and that it's bisected by a zoning boundary, and that it has a substantial amount of unbuildable land on it in the section that would be, would allow this to be constructed. We've also heard testimony that the appellant believes that the limitation on density is inappropriate, given the large amount of undevelopable land on the property. Why don't we start with Nick on this? How do you see this? First, let's talk about the use, and then we'll talk about the density.
I think multiple dwellings is a reasonable use for that area, just giving a general response to that.
Okay. Jim?
Yeah, I agree. I think that a comfortable use will be influenced by the density question that we're going to take up next, but I'm comfortable with the use question.
You know, I really like the project. I think it's sorely needed, but I think the problem is, the real crux of the argument is that, or the most compelling argument here, is that the zone is just really obsolete or inappropriate, the table of use is arbitrary, I could probably be convinced of that. And I also think that, you know, the citation to the workforce housing law is interesting and appropriate, but I, I understand the guidance is, was acknowledged as kind of vague on what exactly the, how much of that us as the ZBA can consider, but, you know, where I come down is that's beyond the scope of what I think the ZBA can really consider at this level. I think essentially, really, the zone needs to be changed. So I, you know, to go from essentially what zero is allowed to ninety-eight, I just have a hard time being the person to approve, even though I wish I could, because I do think on a philosophical level, it's a, it's a good spot for it, it should be approved, in general.
Ted?
Well, I'd probably fall along with Andrew on that. That does seem to be quite a leap, as far as density of units go. But I'm also trying to keep these other projects out of my head here, because I don't, I don't feel that those other—
You mean the future—
—projects that are mentioned—
Future development, no, that's not—
You know, or is relative to—
It's not something that's within our power, and there are others who perhaps ought to think about it. Anything else on that? On the subject of the use, I think you can make an argument that the, the property is unique, and that the configuration of the property definitely creates a hardship for the appellant. The part that is within the district that, that they can build on is not buildable, the part that they can build on therefore is, is outside of the district, but it seems like a reasonable use for that piece of property. We've found in the past that being bisected by a zoning boundary creates, can create a hardship, and we also have found on many occasions that topography, which is what creates the unbuildable part, and there may be some wetlands involved as well, also creates hardship. So I would be prepared to support a, a motion to grant the use. On the density, I, I think the ordinance is pretty clear, that it's buildable land that is the basis of the calculation, and if the ordinance is inappropriate, we really are not the right place to go to, to get that changed. On the subject of the workforce housing policy, that's, so far, has not made its way into specific authorizations for zoning boards, as far as I know, which are governed by the state statute on what zoning boards can and can't do. I, I think that one reason for mentioning it now would be that, in the event that this gets appealed to the board that was created along with that legislation and that policy, you need to have brought the topic up in order to, to appeal to that board, so it's entirely appropriate that they brought it up, but I don't know that we're the place to get that resolved. So, the way I'd come down on it is, I would vote in favor of a motion to grant for the use and against a motion to grant for the density. The wisdom of Solomon here, I've divided everything in half. Would anyone care to make a motion either way, or have I muddied the water sufficiently that we can all go home?
Let me just tell you what I was thinking, because it couldn't form what gets— So, I was inclined to support both, I think. I wouldn't go far, so far as to say the table is arbitrary, but the same ordinance that creates the table gives us the authority to consider the circumstances and grant the variance, so—
Okay.
It's, it's, I don't view it, the table is rigid as restricting our ability to grant the relief.
Very good. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Before motion's made, I could just say that I, I guess, kind of, oddly, I, if, I vote against, I intend to vote against the use, but if it's allowed, I am a little more persuaded by what Mr. Monahan said. If the rest of the board allows it, and then I'm going to vote on the density, I'm not as caught up on the density. So why don't we take them separately, is that?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to approve the use variance.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So the use variance is granted for the reasons laid out by various members of the board in the course of our discussion, most notably, Mr. Monahan, and also yours truly. Next item, then, is the density. Do I hear a motion on that subject?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion.
Again, for the record, my votes may appear odd, but I, you know, I'm taking the fact that, although I voted against it now that we're under the second motion, I'm, I'm not as, I don't have as big a problem with the density. I am convinced by what, you know, Mr. Monahan said on that.
Very good.
I, well, two things, I think the record should show, as part of the motion, we, we understand this is the first stop with the city, and then I think there are some issues around traffic flow and other items that we would hope the planning board will address and just not be forced today.
Very good. All right, let's call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Opposed?
Nay.
The vote is three to two. The motion carries, and the variance is granted. You're all set as far as we're concerned?
Any of our cases go to that new, have any of our cases go to that new—
Oh, the appeal board? I forget what it's called. No, I don't think, although, when we met not long ago with Jim Kennedy, he shivered a little bit when he mentioned that board.
What are we into here?
The next case, last case on our agenda this evening, is case triple zero two dash twenty twenty-three, one fifty-three Fisherville Road, General Commercial District, Thomas Cheney owner. One fifty-nine Fisherville Road, one sixty-five Fisherville Road, and one sixty-nine Fisherville Road are also included in this application. Merger of these lots will be required to comply with the site's plans. The owner wishes to construct a multifamily development on the merged reference properties and seeks a variance to Article twenty-eight, four, five, development of attached and multifamily dwellings, section D two, maximum lot coverage and density, to allow an average density of twenty units per acre, where a maximum of twelve units per acre are allowed. Gentlemen, those of you who are not already sworn in, do you swear to tell the whole, the truth?
I still do.
You identify yourselves for the record, please.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman. I am still Ari Pollak of the Gallagher Firm, this time representing New Hampshire Sustainable Communities LLC, the applicant for one variance relating to one fifty-three Fisherville Road and surrounding properties. With me to my left is Shane Carter, the Principal of New Hampshire Sustainable Communities, and to my further left is Scott Frankowitz, the Principal of New Hampshire Land Consultants, who provided preliminary project engineering. The site's owned by Tom and Deborah Cheney, and they've provided a letter of authorization for New Hampshire Sustainable Communities and its consultants to pursue land use approvals for the improvements. New Hampshire Sustainable is seeking one variance for the number of units of multifamily that can be developed per buildable acre. There is significant similarity between the last application and this application. Because you're building a separate record for each matter, I seem to have no choice but to repeat myself on many items, I'll do the best I can to be efficient with your time. The variance relates to four contiguous parcels on Fisherville Road. I think we're getting there.
Yep.
The combined site is eight point three three acres, in this case, all of which have reasonable grade, are upland and buildable. The site is located in the General Commercial, or the CG District, wherein multifamily dwellings are an allowed use, so a distinction from the last application. In this case, the use is allowed. The property is surrounded by other residential uses, including some which have high-density residential, both to the rear and to the west. There are other similar multifamily projects along the Fisherville Road corridor, at least one of which is currently under construction. The conceptual layout for the improvements is shown on a plan prepared by New Hampshire Land Consultants dated March sixth. It's in your packets, and there it is on the screen. The concept includes four buildings, each having four stories, and having a grand total of one hundred and sixty units of multifamily housing across the four proposed buildings. The project, again, would be served municipal water and sewer. The density of the unrestricted multifamily housing, again, relate, is restricted by ordinance in the district to twelve units per acre, and again, the odd coincidence that elderly housing units are permitted at fourteen units per buildable acre. Based on the twelve-unit-per-acre metric, or measurement, the eight point three three buildable acres could host a hundred units by right, and our request is for a hundred and sixty units, or twelve units per acre, instead of, twenty units per acre, instead of the twelve. Except for the density variance, the concept plan abides by all other relevant planning metrics, lot frontage, setbacks, parking, coverage, perimeter buffers, and building height. In this case, the district allows a higher height than in other, more residential districts, forty-five feet, instead of thirty-five. As to the variance criteria, the statutory elements are addressed in our written materials, but I'd like to summarize them quickly for you. As to hardship, after complying with all relevant zoning considerations, the buildable area can support a hundred and sixty units of multifamily rather than the constrained ninety-nine or a hundred units. I think it's ninety-nine point something. Thus, there's no fair and substantial relationship between the constraints of the multifamily density table and what can be developed on-site with adherence to all other criteria. Simply put, whether we build ninety-nine units, a hundred units, or a hundred and sixty units, the impact on the surrounding parcels is the same. The only potential difference, again, might be traffic generation, and again, you know, the planning board will do its diligence on that subject. The use is reasonable, as it, in this case, relates to an already allowed use, and the density, as proposed, complies with all other aspects of the ordinance. It's simply a question of how many per acre, not of whether the use is, is to be allowed. It's not contrary to the public interest. Again, the community has taken its call to action seriously with housing creation happening in various parts of the city. Again, recent examples are the council's amendment to the Gateway Performance District, which now allows multifamily use, and the opportunities that are well documented in the proposed and published but not adopted Concord Next rezoning proposal. I have the same registry review article, which I'll hand out for this record, but won't summarize again, and I will simply remind you of the conclusion there, which is that would-be buyers and renters in Concord would be excluded from the market if current pricing and scarcity trends continue. The spirit of the ordinance, substantial justice, again, the spirit of the ordinance is to protect abutting uses from, from other uses that don't adhere to appropriate buffers, height, coverage limits, privacy. Neither the ordinance nor substantial justice would support the artification, the application of a barrier relative to the age of occupants, or what a property could sustain while still complying with all other criteria. Also, the ordinance does support, and justice certainly supports, infill projects within the city limits, as opposed to developing more open and green areas. To bolster the opinions we're expressing here as to the state of the housing market, we did solicit a written document from Max Latona, the executive director of the society, I'm sorry, the St. Anselm Center for Ethics and Society. Max is not here tonight, but his letter is. He is familiar with the project, and he urges support for the variance because of the housing crisis. I won't go into detail, you can review his comments. In terms of diminution in property values, there's, there's no evidence to suggest that a property that can be developed in conformance with the ordinance in all aspects other than the multifamily housing density table will have any impact on what is ultimately a rapidly appreciating price marketplace. And to the contrary, again, the registry review article indicates that all systems are go for price appreciation, as the scarcity of housing continues to be a dramatic issue. In this case, we asked a different brokering firm, but got the same opinion, that the project as proposed would not have an impact upon surrounding property values, at least not with respect to post-construction impact. I think we can all agree that construction impacts are a different animal, but in terms of the permanency of impacts, the buffers, the setbacks, they, they all work in favor of no finding of surrounding property devaluation. I know Shane, to my left, wanted— I know Shane to my left wanted to make some comments for you before we close, and I'll ask him to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Ari. Members of the board, appreciate your time, and wanted to really just express a little more color on our process. For the last eight, nine months, I've been engaged with Heather Shank, the planning, the city planner here in the city. And at her urgings, we went down a path of trying to design a project that would meet a greater demand and need for housing in the city. There was a charrette and design done under the Concord Next zoning profile, which we know is not approved, but it's a concept of what the future could hold and what that could bring. And so, we had a mixed-use project that was some 250 units. We brought it to some city council members, we had a public hearing on that. The public hearing was a lot of concern about traffic and a lot of concern about, you know, not-in-my-backyard-type mentality, where we know we have a housing crisis, and we know we have a dire need for affordable workforce housing. That's my company's mission, that's what we do, and we're here to provide a service that the community needs. So, the request for the variance, I wanted to also, we changed our path there because of that feedback. And per Ari's sage advice as well, that why go in and ask for seven or eight different variances when you can just ask for one? The project is still viable at 160 units, and I wanted to add color as well to the existing density that's there. It's 100 units, 8.33 acres, right, 12 units an acre, it's 100 units. The financial viability of the project, however, would force us to develop the project as for-rent townhome project, I'm sorry, for-sale townhome project. At 160 units will allow us, that density change allows us to provide affordable rental housing for the community. It's a very different product. It's a very different need and a very different service to the community for that product. And so, I wanted to offer that color and that additional commentary as to why we're doing what we're doing and why we feel that it's important for the community. Thank you.
We rest. Thank you.
Questions from the board?
So, as to your last question, if, last observation, that if you were going to be limited to 99 or 100 units, it'd be a different, it'd be, wouldn't be rental property? Would those 99 or 100 units be bigger? The square footage be the same?
The square footage would be larger.
Okay.
It's an economic viability question, right? In order to allow for the economic viability, we would have to build some larger townhomes that would be for sale at a higher price point that would not be deemed affordable according to Merrimack County.
Massive construction would be the same, you would just have fewer?
Actually, it would be larger. The mass of construction would actually be larger in terms of the footprint for the 100-unit townhome project versus the multifamily project, which is more condensed footprints and four stories high as opposed to, you know, what would essentially be individual units, right, stacked against each other.
Okay.
It would be a sprawling set of roofs as opposed to what you have now, which is four individual multifamily buildings.
The impervious impact would be much larger.
Right, okay. That was the point I was trying to get into. And could you tell, just question a little bit about the abutters?
Sure, yeah. So, we have residential abutters on either side of us. We have multifamily community across the street, self-storage facility additionally. Behind the project is also a single-family residential community. I think behind that, there are additional condo denser, higher-density communities in addition, but those are the sort of direct abutters.
Where's the other project proposed?
The other multifamily project proposed is quite literally across the street from us.
Is that under construction?
No, no, sir.
It is approved, though, correct?
No.
Oh, no? Okay.
That's a different developer.
Yes.
Has that one gone to the planning board yet on traffic?
I'm not certain.
Yes, it has. The application has been accepted. We are on, we're on for the 15th.
So, they would, if this advanced tonight and went to the planning board, they would be able to take into account the traffic across the street as well?
Yes. The plan is actually the higher the same traffic engineer if this moves forward.
I'm not involved in the other application, which is why I don't know the answers to your questions.
Thank you for not guessing.
I'm under oath.
I was just, I looked over the letters from some of the abutters, especially, and with the Alice Drive abutters behind you, and at least one of them was talking about the fact that there's really no good buffer to their backyard. Does your plan include any additional landscaping or fencing or anything to?
Currently, it is entirely wooded back there. We have 75-foot buffer that we have adhered to, and a 30-foot structure set by all the buildings. There are over three stories, three stories higher have to be set at least 75 feet, so there's at least a 75-foot buffer.
It's entirely mostly wooded?
Yes.
Having said that, the ordinance requires particular landscape compliance at the site plan level, and if the planning board deemed it to be too thin or inadequate, they would have the tools to require more plantings.
Because one of them mentioned, and I'll mispronounce the word, but I think it's the opposite of evergreen, is that they're saying the tree, yeah, thank you. They're saying that the buffer wouldn't be adequate, I guess, in the winter.
Right, so this is what I mean. The planning board would be able to assess whether or not the buffer is perennial, annual?
Annual.
Year-round.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Nick, anything?
Mr. Pollak, could you please review your hardship concept on this?
Yeah, it's pretty similar to the other one, where we comply with everything except in what I believe to be an arbitrary number in the ordinance. We can comply with height, we can comply with setback, we can comply with the perimeter buffers, we can provide community amenities, we can comply with lot coverage. There's actually a sewer manhole on this property that was placed there to facilitate a prior development, and I believe is within a city easement to serve that manhole, and it just never happened. So, the stage is set, we're ready to go. We just need a viable plan that can take advantage of the opportunity. And if you back up to, as we just talked about, if you back up to 100 units, if you honor that 12 instead of an elderly 14 or some other number in a performance district, you tip the scale towards unfeasible or, under the simplex analysis, not a sufficient return on investment, and you end up with, essentially, this project evaporates. You get a different project. You get a completely different concept that has a completely different market, price point, and level of affordability.
May I? So, before, we talked about the other, on the other, you referenced the other property. So, let's go back to the other property. Had a hardship, unique characteristic, and it had a split zone, essentially.
Right.
But I don't understand what you're saying is the hardship here, other than you meet all the other requirements.
Right. The distinction is in the other matter, we needed to use variance to pursue a use that was allowed in a different form across an arbitrary line. In this case, the use is already allowed, we're talking solely about density.
So, again, what's the hardship then?
That the ordinance has a number that doesn't make any sense.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Please come forward. Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition? Bear in mind that we have memorized what you said before.
I have taken that into consideration before it needed to take into consideration.
And you're still sworn in?
Thank you.
So, if you could confine your testimony to this specific issue, that'd be great.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to testify on this issue. So, first, let me say that bringing up next zoning, I think, is an attempt to muddy the waters. It's a proposal, but it doesn't exist. There's nothing anywhere, and what's frustrating, I'm sure for the developers also, is that the planning department, it's my understanding, has been encouraging people to follow the precepts, the concepts of form-based code, which is all well and good, except it doesn't conform with our current zoning. So, the project that they brought to the community with 250 units, even under the most liberal interpretations of the what's next zoning, the form-based code, and even though they've done Phase 1, Phase 2 hasn't been completed, so there's no concept as to what Phase 2 would look like on the Cheney property, because they haven't even had a proposal to identify it. But extrapolating and taking a peek at what potentially, how that project would move forward, even under the most liberal interpretations of form-based code and what Phase 2 could potentially look like, the project that they came to the community with and called members of the community nimby's unfairly would not even meet the, it would still be nonconforming in that property. The fact that they can't build the project that they want to doesn't preclude that they can't use use of the land. This was a summary of impacts of the simplex versus Newington case, prepared for the Office of State Planning Seminar, May 12, 2001, by Peter J. Loughlin. When they talk about financial hardship, these are talking about things that haven't changed since simplex came into play. So, financial hardship is not enough. The law regarding financial hardship remains the same. The fact that the application of an ordinance may cause a landowner to suffer some financial loss is not by itself sufficient to create an unnecessary hardship. There also presumption of validity, there continues to be a presumption that all zoning ordinances are valid, and the party challenging their constitutionality carries the burden of overcoming this presumption. I previously pointed out that there was nothing arbitrary about the limits that they set for density, based on over 30 years of master plans and codes in case, in city zoning. Reasonable zoning regulations that limit economic use of property but do not substantially destroy the value of an individual piece of property are constitutional. And then, there must be, it goes on in Section 4 of his review, "There must be special conditions related to the property that is the subject of the variance application." Excuse me. "The requirement regarding special conditions have not changed and must be kept in mind when applying the new standard for hardship. The statute allows the granting of a variance only when owing to special conditions. A literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. Unless there are special conditions regarding a particular piece of property that cause the ordinance to result in unnecessary hardship, a variance cannot be granted. If all other lots in the zoning district are similarly affected by the zoning ordinance so that there are no special conditions affecting the lot of the applicant, the applicant is not entitled to variance relief." Across the street, the Garland Project, the Richmond Property, they can build, they have about seven acres, so they can build 84 units, they're going to build 68 condominium units there. So, they're, and when we hear about how difficult housing is and what a dire need there is for housing, nobody's arguing that. But currently, in Concord, either approved by the planning board, in the pipeline for the planning board, or projects that are working their way through the planning department, there's over 2,000 units being proposed. So, I, and if the city was truly interested in finding housing for all members of the community regardless of income status, they would pass an ordinance yesterday encoding either requiring a developer or giving a bonus to a developer for building mixed-income housing developments and mixed-unit housing developments. And I'll finish this up. I think I'm done. I have finished it up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Certainly do.
Have a seat, and would you give us your name, please?
My name is Paul Nylen.
Last name, spelling, please?
Nylen, N-Y-L-E-N.
What would you like us to know, Mr. Nylen?
My mother is the main abutter on the other side of this property. We all agree that, yes, we need housing here in town. We've both spoken with many people in the community. Community census is the same as what it was when they proposed their 250 units. You know, I mean, is it really going to fit in our community? You know, what our community is about, is it really going to fit? And how is that going to affect my mother's property value?
Which is your mother's?
183 Fisherville Road.
Which is where on that map?
You can go show us, if you want.
This one, I think. Nylen, Nancy Nylen, that's hers.
Is that the single-family house she lives in?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, she would be immediately next door?
Yes, yes.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
And I'm sure you've all seen the letter from Ann, from Carol Rowe.
Yes, we have it here. I'll be summarizing in a moment.
That is a lot of how a lot of the people around the area truly feel. I think it's a great idea that we have housing coming in, but yet, is it going to make it like the Heights area? Is it going to make, I mean, you're talking traffic, you know? As you know, Fisherville Road already is pretty bad. If you don't know that, you should try pulling out of my mother's driveway someday, 20 minutes waiting there to pull out of the driveway safely. You know, constantly, this is constantly going on. People flying down through there 50 miles an hour, all the time. You know, I rarely see a police officer over at 30 Pines, and I've gone up and spoke with the police officers as well. You know, this is an ongoing battle. You put houses across the way, 66 units, you know, that's, figure two vehicles each, that's 120 cars going out on Fisherville Road. And you put X amount of houses next door to, in this other development that you're trying to get done, how many more cars are you putting there? You know, I know a traffic study has to be done and stuff. If there's people there with kids, where are they all going to go to school? You know, I mean, can we provide for that stuff? Can the fire people provide for what needs to be done? You know, all this stuff needs to be checked into and looked at, and that's our opinions, and our sole opinions. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Would you identify yourselves for the record as you testify, please?
My name is Robert Hostutler, H-O-S-T-U-T-L-E-R. This is my daughter, Beth.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Muzze, and I'm his daughter, also from Concord.
What was your last name again, upside?
Muzze, M-U-Z-Z-E-Y.
What would you like us to know?
Well, I understand that we're only supposed to talk about density, not the project itself.
That's correct.
So, I have very little say. I think Mr. Herschlag did a wonderful job, but my daughter has some things she would like to.
Thank you for having us this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Someone on the board did mention the letter that my father did submit beforehand, so hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at that. But just listening to the discussion this evening, I just had a couple of points I wanted to add, and I think I'll just throw them out there in any order. It was great to get a little more information about this proposal from the developer. There wasn't a lot of information, it's very conceptual at this point, so we didn't have a lot of information to go by and think about. I do want to note that they did reference that they conferred with a brokerage firm, an unnamed brokerage firm, and that- an unnamed brokerage firm, and that that firm seemed to look into things such as buffers, setbacks, but density wasn't in particularly mentioned in their brief description of the report, and we haven't had the opportunity to look at the report to see, to see how that was analyzed. It would be great to have that at some point. It may be, I'm sure it has to do with my lack of experience in this area, but it does seem that when you apply this concept of density to a relocation, it doesn't seem arbitrary at all. It seems to carry a lot more ramifications than just, you know, a mathematical equation of how much can you fit per unit, per acre, buildable acre. It brings issues such as, you know, more lighting, more parking spaces that will be required. Others have mentioned more traffic, more noise, more trash, more dumpsters. I hate to sound like an ogre, but more people, you know? It's just, it's just a more dense development, and I think that must be the reason why that density is part of the zoning code, because it recognizes something different than just setbacks, height, and, and that type of thing. So I think there are ramifications that come with density that haven't really been considered or talked about tonight. And my father lives at forty-six Alice Drive. The, the proposal runs across the entire length of his back lot. If you're familiar with the area, all of the backyards along Alice Drive there are relatively shallow, that's how the subdivision was designed, and the more private aspects of living, you know, what you do in your backyard, what, you know, the bedrooms in the house, they're all in the back. And so this, although, you know, there is the thirty-foot setback, it's pretty close to those more private parts of that, the single one- and two-story houses in that neighborhood. And I know a lot of these more livable things get hashed out with the planning board as well, but if you've got a more dense proposal ahead of you or to review, it just makes all those ramifications more difficult to deal with. And so I think density is an important factor right now, and I think that's one of the reasons why it's in the zoning code to begin with, and that it's, it's not necessarily arbitrary. I, I don't understand that, that argument. I also wanted to note, and I'm sure anyone who, who's been in the Thirty Pines area, I mean, there's, there's single-family homes, there's neighborhoods, and there's, there's a lot of multifamily developments as well. Some, some are older, some are relatively new, but they are almost all two and three, well, they are all two and three-story developments. We don't know their exact heights, of course, but it's, you know, they appear to be far less dense, far fewer parking spaces required than this proposal. And so in particular, the arguments about, you know, no changes to the value of the homes without comparable examples in the neighborhood, I think it's hard to know that, you know, just because someone has stated it without, without the data behind it. And I, and finally, two, two more points. We also heard the argument that real estate prices are increasing, and somehow that becomes an argument as to why, you know, if you, if an abutter's property value is lower, it doesn't matter as much. I mean, that just doesn't seem fair to me. There's no reason why a abutter to a proposal shouldn't get the price increase that they've invested in just for the benefit of the developer next door. And I also wanted to finally mention that I found the discussion of the previous proposal very interesting, but I, I do know both areas pretty well, and you folks probably do too, but I see big differences between these two areas. Certainly, the previous proposal backs onto an interstate. This backs onto a single-family home neighborhood on really two sides. You know, they had non-buildable land issues that don't exist here, they had the split zoning issues that don't exist here. So although we know how you folks voted on that last one, I just hope that you see those differences as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Please come forward.
Thomas Cheney.
What would you like us to know, Mr. Cheney?
Well, as I'm listening to everybody, when they did the, did the development out back of these four properties, I was, I had a set of plans, I knew the realtor, there were going to be a fifteen-foot buffer, the city made it mandatory, they cut right up to the line. And a lot of those people, and I'm not accusing them, dump stuff on my woods that I've had to pick up many times, because it's just a big set of woods, so they, you know, it's pretty easy just to shove it out back. I sold the city a piece of the land to put that sewer on so they didn't have to tear that road up again. I've been planning for years to everybody in Pennacook want a grocery store. And so I put this four houses together with anticipation of them doing the grocery store there. In fact, I've had it under deposit before for a grocery store before the other one went out by the highway. I'm paying forty thousand dollars a year in taxes on those four houses, and half the time I leave them empty because I have to redo them every single time. I've lived in Pennacook ever since I got out of Vietnam. I've watched it grow. I'm very quiet, I, I'm not a outgoing person. I own Apple House Furniture up in Pennacook. I just wanted to put that in. I, if I knew I was going to talk, I would have wrote some notes, but I didn't know I was going to talk. But after listening to everybody else, and I, I agree, there's traffic on Fisherville Road, but also, you're not supposed to back out on Fisherville Road, it's a state highway, isn't it? It's a state road, and I think it's illegal to back out. So there's different issues, and I realize everybody has a different opinion on what they want to do. I want to retire. I've been waiting to sell this property for an awful long time, that's why I've worked with the city on the sewer and the different things. I guess that's about all.
So you're the current owner, and it's under contract conditional on, you're, you're the current owner, right?
Yes, on all four houses. They made a mistake when they said my wife and I, or my ex-wife. I, I own it by myself. She no longer owns that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Any comments from Coden, please?
No, sir.
Mr. Pollak, would you like to offer any factual clarification? All set? With that, we declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for a variance for density of construction of, oh, I, let me back up a second, and again, I'm going to speak to these letters, and Mr. Pollak, if after hearing them you want to make any comments, you'll be welcome to do so. I have a, a letter here from Carol Bro of 12 Charles Street, Pennacook, New Hampshire, who is opposed to the proposal, who feels it's out of character with the existing village due to density, and she's concerned about traffic. I have a letter from Robert C. Hostutler. We, we heard testimony just a few moments ago from Ms. Muzzi and Mr. Hostutler. They have, in the letter, they cover approximately the same items that they mentioned, the letter's on file for anyone who would like to look at it. We have another letter here from Robert Avery. He does not indicate, oh, he lives at 129 Fisherville Road and is concerned about traffic, and is opposed. And we have one from Pat Peck, I believe, yes, Pat Peck or Peak, if I'm mispronouncing that, who believes that the character of the community would be affected negatively and is opposed. And finally, we have one from Kathy Stickney, who is a resident at Fifteen Towers Circle in Pennacook and is concerned about traffic. And is opposed. Mr. Pollak, any, anything to add on any of that?
Just with respect to the theme of traffic impact, I know the board is well aware of the planning board's role in the application process and site plan review. Traffic generation is specific to uses. If this project pivots to townhomes with larger footprints and larger bedroom count, the traffic impact could be the same. It, it doesn't necessarily go down, excuse me, because the unit count goes down, the unit count is different and, and therefore analyzed differently. There, there is public transportation on this corridor, and I believe there's a public transportation stop either on or right near this property. So not everyone that lives there needs to have a car and needs to contribute. The buses run for a reason, and there are people on them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, can I ask you a real quick question that unrelated, but did, did you make the same workforce housing argument in this case? Is this, does this qualify as workforce housing under the statute with, with what they're developing?
Yes, it's the same. I mean, they could equally be an, an applicant for Invest New Hampshire funding, they can equally be an applicant for NIFA funding, and it is all making opportunities reasonably available within a community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
With that, we declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request, as I said earlier, for an increase in density, which would require a variance. We heard testimony that because the project complies with all the other elements of the, of the requirements of the code, that the restriction on density is arbitrary and should be waived. I'm going to start with Mr. Witter this time. Gotcha.
Got me.
You can do it.
I can do, I know, I just have a little.
Would you like to pass him?
Well, if you don't mind, I'll say what I think, but I'm, I'm still kind of.
I don't mind if you say what you think, that's why I'm here.
I'm not, I, I think their hardship argument is, it basically amounts to, well, we meet all the other requirements, I mean, that's a little thin, to be honest, but I also am mulling over this, this workforce housing, because to me, that RSA, this seems more on point with how we can consider it. I mean, it's, it's a variance, in my mind, within the realm of, it's, the use is permitted, it's a matter of the density. So I, you know, I, I wonder how, how much that should be considered in that, you know, do we have an obligation to really, you know, consider the, the need for workforce housing in, in our decision about whether to grant a variance? So I guess that's my thought for now.
Mr. Evans.
Well, I share that ambivalence with regard to the workforce housing, but I really have a hard time with the hardship argument on this. I just think that's lacking.
Mr. Monahan.
Yeah, I'm also trying to get my arms around the hardship. I don't, I think what the applicant said is that the, the ordinance is arbitrary.
Yeah.
And I.
Well, in this case, yeah.
Well, generally, I have the opinion that the legislative bodies or the city doesn't, they don't create arbitrary, it's there for a reason. We should presume there is a reason for it, and I don't think our presumption should be otherwise. So I, I'm, I'm not yet convinced that the hardship is, there was some blunder in the way the table was put in the, in the ordinance.
Mr. Waller.
Yeah, I too am struggling with a hardship issue.
I have the same feeling or logic rationale on this one as I did on the last one in terms of density. I don't see that the hardship criteria have been met. I think that the density is in there for a reason. I think that the workforce housing question is obviously a hot topic right now, and the legislator isn't, legislature has intentionally made it hotter by making some of the moves they have, but they have not empowered zoning boards to override local zoning, in my opinion, in order to allow workforce housing. That's got to be taken up by others. So I would support a motion to deny.
Can I have some questions at Coden?
Of course.
So the, the four lots been joined already?
No, that would be, they're proposing to merge them. I don't believe they submitted a merge plan yet.
Okay. I'd say if they've already merged, that might be a condition to consider for the hardship that they'd have to, but never mind.
Okay. Would anyone care to make a motion either way?
I'll move denial.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I just want to say real quick, because obviously we've had two somewhat similar cases in, in different parts of the city that have, that do have some similarities and some differences, but I, partially kind of explaining my sort of difference of opinion because the cases came so close together that I do, one of the speakers, the, the daughter of, of the gentleman, I think she, you know, made a good point that it, it is, there are differences in terms of the characteristics of these neighborhoods, as well as the split zone. In the, in the other case, there was the, the issue with a lot of undeveloped land, and none of those factors are really here in any, in any significant way, so I do see a difference.
Very good.
Let me just say, I also see a difference, and I think that's why, while I said before it's arbitrary, but the ordinance also gives us the discretion to make some changes in it. So I do think housing's necessary, workforce housing necessary. This is a piece of property where there should be housing, so I'd hope that the developer's going to be able to figure out a way to address this, and if they, welcome them to come back with other solutions.
Or to go to the city council.
Every Monday night, right?
Yeah. Right here in the room.
What would be the relief at city council, to change the density issues?
Which, in view of the housing issues, they may, yeah, they may, a new arbitrary standard. Okay, we have a motion, and it's seconded, and we've had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variance is denied. And that takes care of our regular agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve last month's minutes? Still moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I abstain, I, I wasn't here.
The minutes are approved, four to one abstention.
Did you, did the board also review the acceptance of findings of fact? I thought those were.
Yes, I did. Anybody else?
Yeah, I did.
It was in our packet, right?
Yeah, it was.
Yes, it was, I just need, I need a motion on both of those, please.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, it was wonderful.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the findings of fact. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
I believe that takes care of this evening's festivities.
First, is this the findings of fact from last one?
Question for you in the future. I was under the impression from Tracy as an alternate, if I'm not needed for the vote, I can still participate in the discussion and questions, just not the vote itself? Or is that not the case? I should just?
Well, to tell you the truth, no one's ever done this before.
That's right.
Okay.
So if you have something to say, by all means, speak up.
All right, well, that's good to know, because like, especially this last one, being in real estate for all these years, but once I heard your statement and everybody was kind of in agreement to deny it, I was like, well, they don't need my input.
Well, it's, it's.
I did the math, renting the hundred and sixty units versus the sale, even with the extra cost of selling, you know, the construction of the sale. At the end of the day, after thirty years, they're going to make the same amount of money, whether they make it all now in the construction and sale, or they make it over thirty years in the rental.